Good evening. I want to thank everyone for joining us this evening. Welcome to the Committee of the Whole Hearing. I am Zeke Cohen, City Council President. Tonight is September 17th, 2025. I want to begin by recognizing and thanking my colleagues on the City Council for joining this committee hearing. To my far left, I see Vice President Sharon Green-Milton. Thank you for joining us. I see Councilmember Odette Ramos. I see Councilmember Mark Parker. I see Councilmember Danielle McCray. I see Councilmember Isaac Yizzi Schleifer. I see Councilmember Jermaine Jones. And joining us very shortly, I also see Councilman Tony Glover, who will be making his way into the chambers. I also want to thank our witnesses that are here this evening. Josh Pash, our City Auditor, thank you for joining us. William Seymour is the Engagement Partner, and Tiana Nguyen is an Audit Partner with SB and Co. Really appreciate you all being here with us today. They are the city's external audit firm. And I also want to thank Mr. Michael Moxton, our Director of Finance. And I know he is joined by several members of the team. I see Bob Seneme. I see Director Laura Larson, thank you for joining us. I see Deputy City Administrator Shamaya Kearney, thank you for joining us as well. Thank you to everyone for being here tonight. We are holding this hearing because the 74th City Council is committed to transparency, accountability, and good fiscal stewardship. The residents of this city deserve to know how their money is being spent. The annual comprehensive financial report and the single audit that we will review this evening are both critical to ensure transparency and accountability for all city stakeholders. The annual comprehensive financial report documents the city's financial position at the end of a fiscal year. In the simplest terms, it tells us if our finances are strong or if we got problems. The single audit reveals whether we are spending funds, particularly federal funds, lawfully and for the purposes for which they were provided. These reports serve as the city's most comprehensive year-end financial accounting. They provide important insights into the city's finances, such as our annual fund balance, which means how much money we have left at the end of the year. We, as the City Council, should not have to enter a new budget season without these reports. Unfortunately, over the past five years, these reports have been late, sometimes even months past the deadline required in state and federal law. These delays have hindered the City Council's ability to have a clear picture of the city's finances when considering the budget for next year. In addition, last year's single audit documented six material weaknesses in our city's internal controls over financial reporting, five of which have occurred over the past five years. These weaknesses have affected our water and wastewater billing, grants and cash management, IT security, and financial reporting. Obviously, these are all great, of great concern to the City Council. Today's hearing will examine the timing requirements of the state and federal government for the reports I just discussed, as well as the reasons for the delays in completing these reports. In addition, the council is interested in understanding the significance of the audit findings, the identified material weaknesses and other problems, and the administration's plans for correcting and resolving these issues. Without a strong foundation in this regard, anything we build together as a council and as a city government will be constructed on shaky ground. We hope that this year, these reports will be completed and delivered on time, and we're eager to work with the administration to help to make it happen. Thank you again to my fellow council members and our witnesses for being here today to discuss this important topic. Representatives from three entities will testify this evening, including our City Auditor, Mr. Pash, Mr. Seymour, and Ms. Nguyen from SB and Co., and Mr. Moxton, our city's Finance Director. We will begin with testimony from these witnesses. I very much appreciate you all working with our staff to set reasonable time limits on testimony. We will put up a clock so that each witness can keep track of their remaining time. Also, before moving on, want to recognize Councilmember Paris Gray, thank you for joining us this evening, as well as Councilman Mark Park, sorry, Mark Conway, and Councilmember Antonio Glover. You are welcome. All right. We are going to begin with our City Administrator, Mr. Pash, and the representatives of the External Auditor, Mr. Seymour and Ms. Nguyen. You all will have 15 minutes. We will put up a clock, and when the 15 minutes are elapsed, I will cut you off. Please do not feel offended. I want to respect everyone's time this evening.
Okay. Good evening, honorable council members. My name is Josh Pash. I'm the City Auditor, and I am here with Bill Seymour from SB and Company to brief you on the ACFR and the Single Audit. We appreciate the opportunity to work with SB and Company and Department of Finance on these audits.
Josh, can you speak a little bit closer to the microphone?
We appreciate the opportunity to work with SB and Company and Department of Finance on these audits. It was a team effort. The leadership team is made up of myself, Tandine Mong as the Deputy City Auditor, and Boniface Kayala as the Audit Manager. On the SB side, there is Bill Seymour as the Engagement Partner, and Tiana Nguyen and Chris Lehman as the Audit Partners. I want to start with giving an overview on the audits. So the ACFR, the Annual Comprehensive Financial Report, is the city's official financial report for the fiscal year ended, in this case fiscal year ended June 30th, 2024. This represents a full set of financial statements and supplementary information showing the city's financial position, results of operations, and cash flows for the fiscal year. The due date, as established by the State of Maryland, is December 31st, 2024. The audits received the complete compiled financial statements in April of 2025. I want to be clear that for nine-plus months prior, we had been working with Department of Finance, and they had been submitting schedules, supporting documentation, so that audit procedures had been occurring during that period of time. But when the, it was April when the complete set of financial statements was provided, and then the audit issue date was May 9th, 2025. The Uniform Grant Guidance Audit, also known as a Single Audit, is a comprehensive audit required from all non-federal entities, such as the city of Baltimore, that is required of any entity that spends $750,000 or more in federal funding, and this is a federal requirement. The CIFA and the Single Audit, basically, the CIFA is a financial statement that shows the amounts of all grant funds by grant that were spent during that fiscal year for the city. And the Single Audit does assurance on the numbers that are reported, and then also looks for compliance with laws, grant terms, and regulations to make sure that we are following those federal rules. For example, the requirement for sub-receipient monitoring, we would audit to make sure that that's occurring and occurring sufficiently. The due date for the Single Audit is nine months after year-end, which in this case is March 31st, 2025. We received the final schedule of federal expenditures in April of 2025. Again, we had been receiving documentation for months prior, schedules prior, so that audit work was being done up to that point. But the completed statement of federal expenditures was in April, and the opinion date was May 9th, 2025. I will now turn it over to Bill Seymour.
Thank you, Josh. Good evening, honorable counsel. My name is Bill Seymour. I'm the overall Engagement Partner with SB and Company. Wanted to touch base... Next slide, please. Oh, there we go. Wanted to focus on what we have found during the course of the both financial statement audits as well as the Single Audit. We have had, as mentioned earlier, we have had recurring material weaknesses, both over internal controls over financial reporting, as well as internal controls over compliance with the federal requirements as mandated by Uniform Guidance. Uniform Guidance sets the rules that management has to follow in order to have grant compliance, and also sets the procedures that we do in auditing for that grant compliance. As mentioned earlier, we had material weakness over financial reporting, water billing, grants accounting, fixed assets, and information technology, and we've had those recurring over the course of more than five years. Additionally, for federal compliance, we've had findings related to the improper preparation of the schedule of federal awards, the procedures around sub-receipient monitoring, that is when federal grants are passed through the city to other third-party organizations, cash management of those federal grants, and then late reporting undocumented items related to reporting that are required for grant compliance and going there. When we talk about material weaknesses, one of the things that we'll look at is the timing of it. The flaw in federal grant auditing is because of that due date being nine months after year end, the entire next nine months of the fiscal year, if we have a problem that's found, it normally takes at least two years to fix the issue because management is not necessarily aware of the problem until the following fiscal year. So at a minimum, it normally takes at least two years to be able to clear that, sometimes more. When we have a finding, management provides us a corrective action plan. That corrective action plan is included in the reporting document. And then for an audit perspective, we go through a process to go audit whether or not that corrective action plan has been fully implemented. And once that corrective action plan has been implemented and we're able to test to determine that it was fully implemented, then we would remove that material weakness, or if you will, that finding, from future reports. If the corrective action plan doesn't work or is not fully implemented, then we would continue to report the material weakness. We use different terms for defining findings. There's effectively four that are there. The strongest language that we use as auditors is a material weakness. Effectively, what that means is that if you, the problem was so severe that we believe that a material item could have occurred and not been caught by the controls and procedures as set forth by management. In other words, if you would have removed the external audit function from the process, potentially, there could have been a material error within the financial statements or a material error within compliance. We have what we call a Single Audit Finding, or Control Deficiency, is on the other side of the spectrum. Effectively, anytime that we see a blip in the radar or a problem, it is a minimum that level. If there are other controls that are in place, monitoring, what have you, that would otherwise rectify it, then those would be, would be still a finding potentially, but would be less severe. Then your significant deficiency effectively is everything that's kind of in the middle, not quite a material weakness, but more than just a plain deficiency or finding from there. And I'll turn it back over to Josh to discuss the fund balance.
In preparation of this presentation, I was asked to give a high-level understanding of fund balance. So fund balance is the residual amount in governmental funds after accounting for all financial assets and liabilities. It represents resources available for future spending or the obligations to met. I want to clarify that this is not cash. This is similar to equity on a for-profit financial statement. There are five categories of fund balance. Not all of them are applicable to all organizations. The first one is non-spendable. This includes that amounts that cannot be spent because they are not in spendable form, for example, inventory. The next category is restricted. Restricted is restricted by a third party. It can be external creditors, granters, donors. It could be imposed through law or enabling legislation. An example would be money that is, or funds that are set aside for, to service future debt payments, an example, or creditor. Committed is different from restricted in that it is internally restricted. It represents resources that a government has set aside for a specific purpose. It takes a formal action by a governing body, such as the City Council, and these commitments can only be lifted through the formal process that was used to impose them. And an example would be, I would say, the Baltimore City Youth Fund, which that certain amount of money was restricted for that purpose through that legislation. Assigned is the next category. Assigned is for amounts that the city has for an intended use, as established by the Board of Estimates. The Board of Estimates, in the city's case, has delegated this authority to the Director of Finance, and these restrictions are less binding than committed funds. An example would be an encumbrance. An encumbrance is a set aside of budgeted amounts for a contract or purchase order that has not been spent and that is allocated for that so that the budget is not spent on other things because it is assigned to that contract. And then unassigned is anything that does not fit into the above categories. And that concludes our presentation.
Josh, just clarifying question real quick. Can you just explain for the viewing public the difference between unassigned, or, I'm sorry, the difference between fund balance and the rainy day fund?
So they're the same. Rainy Day Fund is part of fund balance. It is set aside, I believe, in the case of the city, it is part of the unassigned.
Thank you. Appreciate that. And you. All right. Next up, we will hear from Director Moxton. You will also have 15 minutes, sir. Please come on up. We're going to wait till all the presentations are done before questions. Yeah, feel free to go up there.
Hi. Good evening. My name is Michael Moxton. I'm Director of the Department of Finance. I'm here with my team, Deputy Finance Directors Bob Seneme and Ioana Moisides, as well as City Budget Director Laura Larson, our Grants Director Ashley Meyer, and our Acting Chief of the Bureau of Accounting and Payroll Services Danielle Tillman. Do we have our presentation loaded up? There we go. Thank you so much. Okay. So the ACFR is the city's official financial report. It has many different uses, including satisfying legal requirements for all the different public and private entities that we work with, as well as locking in the numbers to serve as historical benchmarks in future analysis. Thing is, a dollar isn't always just a dollar to us. The ACFR delineates where every dollar comes from, what it can be used for, what rules it's subject to, and provides contextual information to aid future decision-makers. The State of Maryland sets a publication standard of six months after the close for municipal ACFRs, with financial penalties kicking in if it's late by over two years. While we've never been anywhere near that two-year danger line, we've unfortunately missed the six-month target in recent years. Today, I'm happy to report that we are on track to making this December 31st target, as of right now, for the FY25 ACFR, which would be the first on-time publication since FY20. My team will momentarily walk you through the lessons that we learned from previous publications and the important changes that have been made for this current cycle. The federal Single Audit ensures that all federal grants are spent for their intended purpose by both city agencies and any private or nonprofit partners that we pass money to. Unfortunately, the late publication of the FY24 ACFR also delayed the Single Audit publication, pushing it to May 9th rather than the March 31st deadline. We expect the FY25 Single Audit to be published well within the statutory deadline. The audit is designed to be conservative in nature. That is, once findings are established, they require a high threshold to remove. Nevertheless, we saw multiple findings removed in the 2024 Single Audit compared to 23. My team will walk you through the audit in detail momentarily to explain the city's work in meeting the corrective action plans for the current cycle. I'm going to pass the next few slides over to Deputy Director Moisides.
Good evening, Council President, members of the council. I'm not quite as nimble these days, and I'm also a lot shorter because I have to wear very flat shoes. Thank you this evening for bringing us here to talk to you, but more importantly also to the public, about something that actually is pretty exciting. The Director referenced some of the challenges and improvements.
Could you just state your name, your full name?
I apologize.
And title. No, no.
Ioana Moisides, Deputy Director of Finance. And as you can see, I'm so excited to be here. I just jumped right in. So this really is the focus and attention that our city as a whole has put into this subject. So obviously, we have this council hearing, but we have a commitment that we have not seen before in the years I've been here, from both the administration, the mayor, the city administrator, the deputy city administrator, who's taken part in many of our process improvements, including interviewing candidates for the bureau. So a lot of exciting things are happening, and that's occurring even at the agency head and at the agency staff, fiscal staff level, where you're seeing people citywide come to convene regularly in forums that are about what guidance, what training we need, what steps we take to do these process improvements. Timeliness was an issue. Delays are not acceptable, and the story of the delays in number of days really highlights, right, the impact of COVID, the impact of staffing and losing key staff, the impact of transitioning to a new accounting system, an enterprise system, where you're doing all of your procurement, all of your billing, all of your payroll, all of your HR from one system, and the growing pains that are associated with that. So you'll see one fiscal year where we were actually straddling two systems and data for two systems for one ACFR. In the following slides, I'm going to turn it over to Danielle Tillman, our Acting Chief of BAPs, and Ashley Meyer, our Grant Director for the Grants Management Office. And they're going to talk about some of the process improvements in the context of the corrective action plans. But as they discuss those specific improvements, such as resolving software mapping issues, implementing new policies, structuring work differently among staff, I want to stress progressive realization. You heard the auditor say, when you have a finding, it's difficult to resolve it immediately because by the time you realize you have the finding and the details of that, you then have to start implementing corrective action plans. You're not going to see that in the next cycle, and frankly, in the city's case, you're not going to see it over several cycles. But just about three years ago, especially for members of the council who are new, I want you to keep in mind, if you had said to me around three years ago, can I have a list of all the grants, what agency it is, who the sponsor is, beginning and end date, I would have requested a report for the 4,000, 5,000, and 6,000 Fund Series, and I would have gotten a list, and it would not have had all that information. It might have had the grant. It would have told us some information, but to really track it down, I would have gone to the agencies, and I would have referred to their detailed spreadsheets, and I would try to match them together to give you that complete look. So where we are at now as a city is exciting, right? That work and progress is going to continue, but today, we can pull that list. Today, I can look in Workday, I can see a grant, I can see the BOE approval, I can see the beginning-end date, I can see the amount of the grant, I can see the agency contact person, and even more importantly, there are systems, internal controls set up in the system that are automated so that things like you can't spend over the amount of the grant, or you can't spend beyond the period of the grant. So Ashley and Danielle are going to talk a little more. We're kind of going to trade off a little on slides, so you'll see me jump up again for two slides, but for now, I'll turn it over to Ashley.
Thank you. Good evening. I'm Ashley Meyer. I'm the Director of Grants Management in the Department of Finance. Let's see. This is how I move the slides. Yes, okay. So to talk about some of our audit findings and the work that we're doing to address them, we have to think about what the overall summary is of what was found in the audit. So the Single Audit covered nine major programs in Fiscal 24, and the program findings centered around some very core issues, such as missing documentation that's required by the program, the UEI, or the Unique Entity Identifier, and the federal award identification number being missing on executed grant agreements, sub-receipient monitoring and reporting standards and practices, drawdowns from our sponsors, reporting submission, and things of that nature. So we were able to implement some corrective actions for the prior year findings, and some of those were cleared. And going forward, we're doing as much work as we can to address some of the additional findings. I'm going to go ahead and let my colleague Danielle Tillman go over the next slide.
Yeah, I think that one. Okay. There we go. Hi. I'm Danielle Tillman. I'm currently the Acting Chief at BAPs Bureau of Accounting and Payroll Services. I'm just going to go over one of the findings that we had in accounting, but in reference to just significant pull share adjustments into the fiscal year financial statements. It talks about delays and reconciling cash, investments, receivables, capital assets, and proprietary funds. So some of these delays, as Ioana and Michael have already mentioned, are due to a lot of transitioning and staff shortages that we have started to fill in these positions in early FY26. Excuse me. In, in August and early, starting in July, we worked with one of our consulting partners in Workheaver, as well as with the IT and accounting staff. We all worked together to ensure that some of the mapping issues that we had related to FY24's AFRA didn't occur in FY25. This, these mapping issues caused some of the delays that we're talking about here today, as well as some adjustments that needed to be made. And FY24 was the first time we will use the Workheaver software. So as Ioana had mentioned, there were some growing pains, but these things are being addressed, and we are working with the team to make sure this runs smoothly in FY25.
Okay. So for the, to recap Fiscal 25 in regards to some of the actions that we've taken for our audit, we undertook several different initiatives in preparation for what we assumed would be similar findings for Fiscal 24. So I can go over a few of those that are on the slide. The Grants Management Office developed a draft Grants Transformation Plan outlining some goals that we would like to set for ourselves as a city through Fiscal 28. We did draft two new administrative manual policies. One is on sub-receipient monitoring to address the sub-receipient monitoring practices and policies in the city, make sure that we are compliant with the Uniform Federal Guidance, and another one addresses the Unique Entity Identifier. Both of those policies were approved today by the Board of Estimates. We also completed a citywide grants needs assessment. We had 18 different grant-receiving agencies respond to the assessment, 29 different unique responses, so that we could take an actual inventory of what some of our grant management challenges are. We've also been coordinating with all of the agencies to secure Grants Management Office access to all of our grant portals, so drawdown portals, application portals, system award management portals, so that we can make sure that there's redundancy built in so that we don't lose access to timely drawdowns, timely reporting submissions in the event of staff attrition or turnover. And then we've also done additional compliance reviews for Workday grant setup. We have started implementing monthly work tag and activations to minimize improper spend. We have also begun verifying sub-award status before we, the Grants Management Office, approve different awards in Workday, just to verify that there are or are not any sub-awards associated with the grant. And then going forward, the, the other steps that I'm going to talk about address a lot of the different findings. They're all sort of related in the grant space, as you can see, lack of formal procedures and accountability at various departments, not able to establish accurate balance of accounts for grants. So a lot of what I just This categorizes all of our grants, and it triggers certain rules within the system. This just makes it very clear what is grant activity and non-grant activity so that we can keep an accurate record. As I said, we, my team, have implemented a monthly inactivation of work tags without an award so that we can enforce different spend controls and minimize the spend that shouldn't be happening. We've also, as I mentioned, started identifying who our sub- recipients and sub-awards are in our grants when we go to set them up, to make sure that we aren't missing anything for not only our year-end reporting, but just our general data. And now my office, the GMO, is the final approver for all grant award creation, the reviewing of the grant award budget, the calendar, just to standardize all of the information that's included and make sure that everything is uniform in our system of record. And we are also in the process of doing a Workday security role review with different agencies because we need to assess what actions need to be taken with what security access, and then make sure that we communicate that to the appropriate grant staff so that individual agencies have the staffers with the capabilities they need to manage their grants effectively. Next couple of points, just talking about some of the things that we've done. There are two bullet points on here, as you can see. Some leadership positions in my sister Bureau, BAPS, have been filled over the past several months, and they continue to do recruitment efforts. My team, in partnership with BAPS, since May of 2024, has held a monthly training for Grants Management. We get about-
Sorry, just for the general audience, could you say what BAPS is?
Sorry, I'm living in acronyms. The Bureau of Accounting and Payroll Systems.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. So together, in partnership with that Bureau, we have been hosting monthly grant trainings. We get about 90 attendees to 100 attendees per session from all of the grant-receiving and granting agencies in the city. We train on a various, you know, array of topics, as you can see in the slides, so I won't go over all of them. And we continue to have new trainings every single month. We've had outside entities come in and train all of the people. All of the trainings are recorded, and they are categorized and co-located on our SharePoint site so that everybody can access them, even if they weren't there at the training. And then additionally, what we are doing, we undertook an effort in July of 2025 to implement mandatory requirements in Workday to have agencies enter all of their billing and their reporting milestones so that we can stop missing our reporting deadlines and our drawdown deadlines. So now agencies are going to, starting September of this year, it is required that they now add those milestones into their award when they set it up in Workday so that there's transparency about when things are due, so that we don't continue to miss deadlines. We've also implemented a citywide oversight of the UEI, Unique Entity Identifier process, just as a, for those who may not know, the UEI is sort of the federal registration number that you have to have if you are going to receive federal funds. So we had a work group to talk about how we in the city implement and manage our UEIs. We did just get a BOE policy, Board of Estimates policy, approved for the administrative manual on our UEI usage and best practices. And we are also now requiring all agencies to partner with my office, the Grants Management Office, to make sure that there's redundancy in accessing and managing those renewals so that we aren't locked out of federal funds. And I already mentioned the two BOE policies that were approved today. And then going forward, for the rest of Fiscal '26, some of the efforts that we have, my office is partnering with the Mayor's Office of Infrastructure Development. They are a great partner resource in the capital grant space, and so we're working together to develop a citywide grants handbook so that we can finally have one place where all of our citywide practices are located for grants. I've talked about adding award tasks, and we have collaborated with the Budget, Bureau of Budget Management and Research to develop a Workday Grants Dashboard that dashboards all of the data in the Workday system so that we can get an overall view of how we spend and manage our grants in Workday. I think that's it for me. I'm going to give it to Danielle.
All right. I'm going to quickly go over the one finding, the one new finding we had that wasn't a repeat finding for FY '24 dealing with the cash and crash equivalency. And this finding was basically due to the improper reconciliation of one of our-
Danielle, could you lift the mic up just a little?
I'm sorry. One of our payroll accounts. And that has since been rectified. We, it was due to a lack of training in staff. It was new, like was been mentioned before, kind of over to Workday. This payroll account was a little different than other ones, so it requires some training of the staff to make sure that the account is being reconciled properly and on time and completely. We also put in a metric to make sure that all bank reconciliations are done within 30 days of all banking transactions starting in July FY '26. And all of FY '25, bank reconciliations have been completed, so we do expect this not to be a repeat finding. I'm going to turn it over to Yowana.
I will jump up very quickly. Yowana Mositas, Deputy Director of Finance, again, to discuss water and wastewater and the corrective actions associated with that. So the finding related to accounts that had been billed inconsistently and untimely, and thus, the water and wastewater utility system was not able to establish accurate water and wastewater revenue. Now, DPW has provided updates, and again, in terms of progressive realization, looking at kind of the timeline, right? So in June 2024, DPW upgraded the water billing system with the new RootSmart software. That optimized the billing cycles and improved that to 98% of bills issued on time. There are other benefits associated with that that DPW would be more familiar with in terms of root efficiency, et cetera. But then DPW also, in May of 2025, revamped the staff training curriculum and launched a six-month rotational program with the intent of improving the cross-functional skill development and creating redundancies to improve the accuracy of water billing. And of note, their current practice involves structured tracking and reporting of overdue AR via a monthly meeting. I'll note that there also, and I know because I've been to some of them, regularly meeting with stakeholders, including OPI, law, and finance, to review overdue accounts and prioritize write-offs versus collection methods.
If you could briefly finish up, we'd appreciate it.
And quickly go over just fixed assets, accounting, and some of the things that we've done to address these corrective actions. So a few things that we've done. First, we've hired a capital accounting manager. This position was vacant for a while, so just backfill to look at the processes and to assess the business process for capital projects, as well as fixed assets and how we are addressing capitalization, as well as enhancing and producing better reporting so we can ensure that we are reporting our accurate information according to projects and our current fixed assets. As well as, we have also implemented and developed SOPs around closing out projects that had been closed out in Workday in the past. This also gives us better insight into what's actually pending and what's open, and also calculating depreciation accurately.
Thank you.
Everything I already said applies to all of the other grant-related findings, so I can keep it pretty quick, with the one exception being that we did work with the Office of Performance Innovation and the Deputy Chief Administrator to do a, to create a corrective action plan tracker. So now that the Grants Management Office is tracking movement on corrective action plans in real time.
Excellent.
Yeah, just wanted to thank the team. Our last couple of slides were on fund balance, but they're substantially similar to what the auditor presented, so we can-
Our Director Larson and Senneme, do you want, I was going to give you all five minutes to do the fund balance.
Yeah, absolutely.
Do you want to do that? Great. If you could add five minutes, appreciate it. And before you sit down, I do want to thank you all for the hard work I know you've been doing, and just publicly appreciate the efforts to get better at this. So thank you for what you're doing. Dr. Senneme? Or Deputy Director Senneme? Let's give this man his two seconds back. Perfect.
Okay. Good evening. Bob Senneme, Deputy Finance Director, and I just wanted to spend a couple of minutes talking about fund balance. You heard earlier, our city auditor talked about the categories. I just want to give you a little bit of flavor of how this looks to us and where we have, you know, some flexibility in those numbers. So you heard the city auditor say earlier that a lot of fund balance isn't really liquid or cash. Some of these are things that have to be classified in a certain category for accounting purposes, and that's true on the first two, especially non-spendable are things that are not cash, cannot be spent. For us, that's mostly just some inventories. The restricted category is for things that are constrained by either our creditors or some kind of legislation. For us, there's two big things there. One is we have a note receivable for the Convention Center Hotel that gets reported in that category. And there's also something called our landfill closure funds, where there have been funds set aside that are for the purpose of, you know, closing those landfills and doing additional development when that time comes. Assigned is a spot where we have a little bit of flexibility. There's one category that we have very little flexibility. The first is, we report what we call encumbrances under assigned fund balance, and that can be as simple as we made a commitment or an obligation in one fiscal year, and it won't be paid until the next. That's very common during our closeout process, that there are things, we have, you know, an open invoice or something that we've received that we haven't yet paid for. So a lot of that gets reported as assigned fund balance. But outside of that, there's another component that we do some work at the end of each fiscal year to determine what we should set aside. And I just want to walk through the process for how that works. So if there are resources left over at the end of a fiscal year, the, as the city auditor said, there is some delegated authority to finance department to review that and decide where to assign those funds for. I'll give a couple of examples from the past that hopefully will ring true, that some of you might remember. You know, there were, for many years, there was a large lawsuit against the city about our fire and police pension litigation, and for many years, I would come to this body and say, we don't know when that's going to settle, we don't know exactly how much that is going to cost, but we would check in with our attorneys, and they would say, you know, you could be liable for $30 million, or $50 million, or $80 million for something like that. We ended up settling that. I went back and looked at my notes. We ended up settling it for $35 million, but that was something that we said we need to set an amount of money that's adequate, so if there is a judgment reached or settlement reached, that we don't have to scramble to find the money that we have it available. Another, I think, good example is other outstanding legal liabilities, and some that we had to set money aside for are some of the police-related liabilities. Folks, remember, of course, we had the GTTF case where that opened up some liability that the city could get sued. We've had a couple large wrongful imprisonment cases where they've come, you know, those folks have come and filed suit against the city, and we've had to settle those cases. Some have actually gone to a jury trial. So we actually sit down with our legal folks at the end of each year, Central Law Department and the Police Department, and try to get a sense if there's anything big and outstanding that we should be prepared for. If you remember, there was one large one, we paid out $48 million for wrongful imprisonment, so that was something that we had talked about years earlier, had set that money aside in fund balance, so that we had it when we needed it. Those are best guesses. You know, we try to work with the attorneys to figure out, okay, if this was a good trial, what we spend, if we settled it, what we need to spend. So by no means are they perfect amounts, but we have to make a judgment and make sure that there's some money set aside for those purposes. You know, if there is a year where there are additional resources where we don't need to set money aside, and I would say, most of my career, when we get to close out and we go through those things with the Law Department, there are many known outstanding risks. But if we don't, you know, we would appropriate money in the next year's budget for capital, and we've done that. We actually did that in Fiscal '26. You know, there's a, in the Fiscal '26 budget, there's a draw from fund balance where we put that money towards capital. You know, generally, when we have additional resources, we think capital is one of the first places you go because we've been so under-resourced for capital over many years. And then that final, so that's the assigned, where we have a little bit of judgment there. And then the final category, unassigned, you know, that's anything left over that's not included in those other types. For us, what largely gets reported there is, in unassigned fund balance, is our rainy day fund. The reason it's unassigned is because it's there, but we don't know what it's going to ultimately be used for. It's, the intent of the rainy day fund is if you have an emergency, that you don't know what it's going to be, you have the money available for that. We have a pretty strict board policy on that. We're trying to reach a target that our rainy day fund is about 8% of our next year's subsequent budget. It's close to $170 million now. We've used it three times in the last decade or so, so it has served its purpose. And we've had emergencies like COVID-19, like the civil unrest, like a year where we had extraordinary snowstorms. We were able to drill those funds out of unassigned fund balance to pay for those purposes. So that just gives you a little bit of flavor of what's in those categories from a city perspective. And we did list here on the next slide just the amounts that are reported in '24, but there's notes to those in the, in the financial statements as well. Oops, sorry. Those are the numbers. Again, you can see those in the ACFIR. There's notes in the financial statements about what makes up those categories.
Thank you, Deputy Director. Appreciate that. I think it's important to just understand for the council, fund balance, and what it does, and what it is, and what is and not. So appreciate that presentation. Colleagues, I am going to ask that we do three questions each for each round. I'm going to start, and then I'm going to go to the, our Budget Chair, McCray, and then I will accept questions in the form of note cards. So if you have one, please write down that you want to ask a question. This is a wonky topic, so try to de-wonkify it as much as you can. A lot of acronyms being thrown around, but very important topic. So appreciate all the witnesses for speaking with us tonight. Let me start with Mr. Pash. To be clear, the state generally requires submission of the annual comprehensive financial report, the ACFIR, by December 31st, and the single audit is due for Baltimore on March 31st. Is that accurate?
Correct.
When was each completed and submitted for FY '24?
The audits were completed with the opinion dated May 9, 2025.
May?
9, 2025.
So the annual comprehensive financial report, and for that matter, the single audit, were delivered when we were pretty far along in budget season. Mr. Moxon, going to go to you for a second. Just curious, had these reports been completed on time, would it have been possible for us to have had finalized actuals in the budget book to review while we were considering the budget?
We are able to come up with, with actuals before the actual hard completion of the ACFIR. It's obviously not an ideal situation to be in, but we've come up with reporting workarounds. It's not a place we want to be in, and in the future, we will have fully completed ACFRs before we're in the budget cycle. But, but the answer to your question is, yes, there are, there are ways that we've come up with, with getting at actuals.
Say more, please.
We've, we've had, we've had reporting issues in, in the budget book that are sort of in, in parallel with the ACFIR. We have a resolution to those issues now, so the next budget book is going to have clean actuals that are going to be timely.
I'm sorry, I meant to say more about the workarounds. Like, what does, what does that look like?
Oh, more, more about the-
You, you mentioned in the past, when we have not been able to have actuals, that we've sort of, the approximated or had workarounds. Could you say what that looks like?
Sure. There were some, some instances, I think I recall one a couple of years ago, where we did, did not have an on-time ACFIR. We were also similarly looking at an ACFIR that was, I think, the 2023 ACFIR was even later, and we did, we did have some actuals reporting that we put into the budget book. It was, again- Oh, more, more about the?
You, you mentioned in the past when we have not been able to have actuals that we've sort of, the approximated or had workarounds. Could you say what that looks like?
Sure. There were some, some instances. I think I recall one a couple of years ago where we did, did not have an on-time ACFR. We were also similarly looking at an ACFR that was, I think the 2023 ACFR was even later. And we did, we did have some actuals reporting that we put into the budget book. It was, again, kind of pulled from separate reporting from the ACFR, which was not, not ideal, but it's doable. So I just want to kind of provide a technical answer to your question. So it's, the place we want to be is we want to have a complete ACFR before we get into the budget process. Technically, it is possible to go through the budget process without an ACFR. It's not what we want to do.
Not ideal, sounds right. Finally, I want to thank you for laying out your plans to ensure timely submission of the ACFR going forward. Why are you so confident these plans will succeed this year in ensuring the timely submission of the ACFR?
Absolutely. The, the short answer is because of where we've already gotten to so far. We've reached a number of milestones already through this point in September. The first of those was bringing on a number of key staff. The second was in just meeting our own internal deadlines for gathering data from agencies, for kind of closing down various numbers and for sharing information between bureaus. We are thus far on track for our internal metrics and that is already better significantly than we were at this time last year. We, we set out a tracker for ourselves that is in line with where we need to be for December 31st and building backwards from there. And we are in line with that tracker as of today. That's what gives me the confidence. We are obviously not able to predict the future. Anything can happen. And I want to sit here and basically say we will guarantee it. There's nothing that I can guarantee in this business, but we are, as of today, on track. And we were not on track last fall and we knew it. And that puts us in a better place than we've been in, in a very long time, as Deputy Moiseides referred to. We are fundamentally in a stronger place with our reporting, with our staffing, on accounting than this department's been in since years ago, since basically before we got into COVID. That's an exciting place to be after some difficult years. And that gives me a lot of, a lot of hope about where we are for this cycle.
I appreciate that. And again, I do genuinely appreciate what I've seen and some really good work that I think your team is doing. Having these reports on time, having them be precise is critically important to this city council and to all the people that we represent. And so it is my expectation and sincere hope that this year we will be in on time and the council will be paying close attention. With that, Councilmember McCray?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. In reading the audit report, majority of the material weaknesses, the significant deficiencies, they are repeated. And for Mr. Seymour, just hearing our, just hearing Director Moxton as well as our finance team discuss their, the steps that the city is implementing, the plans that we have already implemented in some cases to resolve the material weaknesses, to resolve significant deficiencies that are taking place. And I say that, that I'm glad that we're working to resolve those concerns. But what I'm, what I'm curious about is why are the weaknesses, why have they persisted for so long? I mean, in the past, has the city had plans to resolve the weaknesses? Has the city failed to effectively implement these plans or both?
Good evening. Each year, from an audit perspective, stands on its own. And, you know, from a, we look at the corrective action plans that are provided by management. Management will go through and add what is the timing that they will go through and have those items implemented. And within, going through, if you will, history of, with the pandemic and then as management had mentioned, changeover in management and positions, the items were not addressed to the satisfaction from the, for the audit for us to be able to remove those material weaknesses from there. The facts and circumstances aren't necessarily exactly the same from one year to the next. If you look at the internal control over financial reporting, material weakness, you know, one year we would have issues related to fixed assets, related to pension accounting. And then the following year, it would be a different area that, that would cause it, but would still be under the premise of internal control over financial reporting.
And what I would, what I would add to that is, first, there's several findings that were removed from, from '22 to '23 and then from '23 to '24. And there will be a lot more removed from '24 to '25. And that is because we have put down tools just this year that we didn't have before. We are doing grant tracking and have policies in place and a team in place that we didn't have last year. All of this takes time to build. It's, it's people and it's systems. We've been building it for the last several years. And it is starting to pay off, which is why even in this last cycle, and it all lags, it all speaks to where we were a year ago. But we were already starting to see some of the findings lifted. We will see a lot more acceleration in this cycle. Some of this is because removing findings is hard. A finding can be something to the effect of there has to be stronger oversight. And the corrective action plan involves a multi-year plan for oversight. So you can put in place oversight and have great oversight for a year and technically not have met your corrective action plan yet because it's only in place for one year and the plan calls for multiple years. It's a high threshold, but we've been at it in some cases for several years. And so the findings will drop one by one. And as Director Meyer took you through, we are working on every single finding and every single corrective action plan. So this is the year you're going to see the acceleration. This is kind of the payoff year where the grants work really sort of, the rubber meets the road. But I don't think that it's likely in any one year to get, to get completely to zero. I do think that this is the year where we noticeably have many more findings removed than we have in prior years.
Council President, if I could just respond to that as well?
Yeah, Deputy City Administrator?
Thank you. So what I would say is different this year is a concerted effort from the city administrator's office to make sure that we are involved as in a part of the process. In past years, typically the single audit or the ACFR were shared with the city administrator's office, which has only been in existence for a couple of years, with the mayor's office after the completion of both. We are now asking to be involved as a part of that process. We are sitting in meetings. We are having conversations with our external auditor and city auditor to make sure that we are involved and understand what's being requested of our Department of Finance and also making sure that we are clear about what's not being provided and the reasons for that. There is an error of, an era of accountability that has been ushered in under this administration and with City Administrator Leach and I. And we are deeply involved. We share your concerns and understand that this is critically important, to use your words, not only to our residents, but also to the council and also to us. It is important for the city to have trust in our finances and we're very dedicated to ensuring that we do that.
Thank you. I appreciate you leaning in on that. Back to you, Councilmember McCray.
I appreciate it too. Director Moxton, hearing what Deputy City Administrator Kearney just stated and also hearing you say that this is the year for acceleration, which I love. Why do you believe that the current efforts, if you want to build on anything that Deputy City Administrator Kearney said, why do you believe that our current efforts will resolve some of these longstanding material weaknesses? Why, why do you believe that it's going to succeed this time?
Quite simply because we, we're already doing it. We're already meeting the benchmarks for the corrective action plans. We see it succeeding in real time. So we're looking forward to submitting those, those documents to the auditors. There are some instances where it's very straightforward, where we understand the, the issue, the misalignment, the document that wasn't provided the last time around. And it exists. The reconciliation is known, the training is in place, and it will be provided this time. There are other cases where it was just a multi-stage process and the additional pieces are in place now. The additional policies that are in place, including the policies that the BOE approved just this morning, are a huge step in that direction. There are standard practices in this field for how you get findings removed. You just follow along the path and that's exactly what we're doing now. There was no surprise to us over these past few years as we were building to this point that we had these findings. We understood that we were facing staffing challenges, training challenges. There was a gradual buildup to this moment. And we are now in a place where we can expect to capitalize on those investments that were made.
Thank you all for your responses. And thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Councilmember McCray. Going to make a slight exception and due to a family situation, I'm going to go to, directly to Councilmember Glover.
Thank you, Mr. President. So I want to kind of stick on the weaknesses and materials and things of the nature with the water and wastewater accounting. I want to thank everyone for joining us this evening. I will focus my questions on one of the material weaknesses described in the single audit that I know is concerning to not only us on the council, but also to the residents of Baltimore. And that is problems in our water and wastewater accounting. According to the single audit, we can't track water billings. And as of June 2024, we had a new software system put in place, but we are not making use of it. To the director, are we now making full use of the new software to manage the water and wastewater billing?
I want to, I want to make sure that on, on that technical question that I fully consult with my colleagues in DPW before I give a proper technical answer. I, I know that a lot of progress has been made in that implementation. Let me just briefly turn to my team. Is there anything more we can say or should we get a?
Beyond what is outlined in the slides and then knowing the kind of monthly work that's going on with the process improvement related to overdue collections, understanding what's due, that partnership between OPI, law, DPW. Beyond that, at this point, I couldn't speak to that, but would be happy to follow up as appropriate with the assistance of MOGR with DPW.
Absolutely. And, and Councilmember, you're, you're pointing to an issue that is certainly of great concern to us as well. It is perhaps one of the, the most important and the biggest lifts in, in this exercise. We're going to be working very closely with all of the partners that, that the deputy just mentioned. It is a lengthy process and we will keep the council updated as we go through it. But we will, we will get there.
DCA, I'm going to ask that we get a committee report on that. If you all, Mr. Moxton and team, could consult with the Department of Public Works? It's an important question that the council member asks. And as he said, very relevant for a lot of residents in the city of Baltimore. DCA, could we get like a written, maybe one or two-page report back within the next seven business days?
Yes, I'm happy to take this request back to Deputy Mayor Khalil Zaid to also work with DPW to get this report to you within the next seven days.
Great. Councilman, does that work for you?
No, I want to ask another question. Oh, yeah, that's fine. Yeah, that works. Well, for me, yes.
Great.
Yeah.
Ask your next question, sir.
All right. So my next question is, can the city fully account for the water and wastewater billings right now? And if not, by what date do you think the city will be able to fix these issues?
I mean, I think that's the same response is that we need to coordinate with DPW and also with the deputy mayor to provide a response. If you want that included as a part of the report, we can do that.
Okay, thank you. And my, one more, Mr. President?
Yes, sir. You got three.
Okay. And my last one is, what does the estimate cost to the city resulting from errors in the water and wastewater billing in the past, say like the last two years?
I, I wouldn't, I wouldn't have that number. I think, I think that might, that might be the same answer. I, I would just mention that an accounting reconciliation isn't necessarily the same thing as an error or something that costs the city money. But, but that is obviously something of great concern to us and, and we can, we can include that in the, in the work we do with, with DPW on the reporting back.
Okay, thank you. I appreciate it. Thanks, Mr. President.
Not a problem. Thank you, Councilman. DCA, does seven days still sound good for those three?
It's easy for me to say seven days because I don't know, we'll go, we'll go into some of the analysis. But if we think that seven days is not achievable, we will be sure to, to circle back with you, to ask for additional time. Does that work?
It is fine. Thank you.
Great. Thank you. Councilman Schleifer?
Thank you, Mr. President. Director Moxton, thank you for your work and your team's work in putting those controls in place. We certainly appreciate that. Can you, or maybe this, this would be for Bob. If you can just provide a little bit more details regarding the end, the year-end fund balance. I see that this is obviously a small fund balance at the end of '24 in the grand scheme of things. But what's left over from previous years going back for like unassigned or even, you know, assigned items that end up not being spent? How much is in that pot?
So what, what exhibit are you, are you looking at the?
So I'm looking at like the fiscal year '24 year-end fund balance. And so, you know, every year, the numbers aren't exactly this, you know, they're not to the penny. And so there's always hopefully leftover money instead of a shortfall. And so as that money stacks up or as certain projects that were budgeted don't happen and there's that money left over, what is that fund to balance?
So let me, let me try to answer in two ways. So, you know, like I said earlier, a lot of what's in, in assigned fund balance is encumbrances, which are pretty typical kind of year over year. We have, you know, in fund balance, we still have the rainy day fund, of course, which I said is close to $170 million at this point. There was some money in the '24 ACFR that was ultimately drawn down in '25 and '26. And so that's kind of the timing trick of like when that, when the ACFR is finishing up, we have to figure out, is there anything we needed to draw down in '25 or plan to draw down in '26? I mean, what I can tell you is for the kind of bigger picture stuff that I talked about, kind of the legal liabilities and, you know, some of the bigger cases, we think that most of that has kind of settled at this point. And so most of the money that was left in '24 was ultimately appropriated in either the '25 or '26 budget.
Right. And how's that accounted for, that money? Like, how do we, how do we see what those expenditures are? Like when there's, you know, an over, you know, when there's a leftover amount of a few hundred thousand dollars or more, where does, where is that accounted for when that's spent down?
Yeah, two, two ways. In the, in the ACFR, you can actually see a listing of the fund balance and there's notes to the financial statements, which, which gives a little bit more detail. And then in the budget document each year, And then, in the budget document each year, in our revenue, if we're drawing money from fund balance, for like I gave the example of like capital expenditures, you'll see that in the budget publication. So, we have a list of all the revenues. And, you know, when Law and team present that, we talk a lot about recurring revenues, what's gonna happen with property tax, income tax, all that. But there sometimes is money that we're drawing from fund balance, and as part of our revenue, it says that it's coming from fund balance. So, we do, if we're planning to do that in any budget year, we'll report that as part of that annual budget publication. And we can show you that, you know, in '25, '26, or even going back further. There's usually something pulled from there. It's been a little higher these last couple of years because we had some of those additional resources to throw at.
Gotcha. So, it's not just automatically going into the rainy day fund. It's actually being spent?
No, right. Yeah, it is being, in many cases, most cases, it's being spent for something. Rainy Day Fund, we do make a budgeted contribution to the Rainy Day Fund because you want the value to kind of keep up with inflation over time. That's also reported in the budget publication as an expenditure, as a contribution to the general fund reserve. But that's to kind of maintain and to try to get to that 8% level, which is our policy target.
Gotcha. Okay, thank you. And this is for Bill. You were talking about the recurring material weaknesses and the significant findings over the years. And you have the improper preparation of schedule of federal awards and sub-recipient monitoring and proper reporting. Which federal awards is this referring to?
So, the finding related to the schedule of expenditure of federal awards, it goes across all of the city's federal grant programs. That is the schedule, if you will. It's kind of like the financial statement that shows the total expenditures for the fiscal period that would be there. The sub-recipient monitoring, one related to Department of Health, thank you, Tiana, mostly related to the Department of Health for certain pass-through grants that we were under audit for that period.
And is, are the ARPA funds involved in any of these findings?
Yes. Over the years, we have audited the ARPA funds, included in the schedule of federal awards. We have issued qualified opinions related to those for certain sub-recipient monitoring issues, as well as cash management items. That is where we'd say that the city did not comply with the requirements as set forth within Uniform Guidance.
Gotcha. And on the same note, Director Moxon, you mentioned about the grant tracking that you guys are doing now, which sounds great. Is that duplicating the work that's being done by the ARPA office?
No, that's building on it. We pretty much learned from the ARPA office to build out grants tracking for the rest of the city. Director Meyer, do you want to...
So, you're not overseeing the same grants? There's different grants being overseen by different...
That's right.
So, is there like a breakdown that you guys have of which agencies and which grants you're overseeing versus they're overseeing?
It's still being built out on the grant side. I'd say like the ARPA tracking is extremely complete and built out, whereas on the grant side, we're still building. But we are essentially building out something for grants that's kind of meant to be designed off of what was once done for ARPA.
Gotcha. Thank you. And just a point of clarity on this, Bob, this fund balance. Is this, is this number in the millions? Or this is an actual...
It's in the, it's nine hundred and twenty-two million is the total. It's in the thousands.
Okay, because it's not indicated anywhere that that's what it is. So, this number looks like 922,000. And I'm sitting here thinking you guys are like, you know, you got it down to like pretty close. I mean, $922,000 on our budget is very small. But this is 922 million.
That's right.
That's right.
That's right.
Okay.
But again...
Let's include that next time, like put like a...
Yeah, we should have had a...
Like a million next to it or something, yeah? Or add some zeros? Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Schleifer. Councilman Conway?
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd like to focus my questions on an issue that has been a pretty significant concern for the council. It's something I think actually came up during the budget process. And that was the issue around large year-end supplementals to close out the budget. So, Director Moxon, is it the case that as long as a city as a whole is able to pay its bills during the fiscal year, and it's not in deficit, individual agencies can overspend the amounts appropriated to them? And that that spending is in typically covered by supplemental appropriations that the council has been asked to pass at the end of the fiscal year?
Good evening, Councilman Conway. I can jump in and assist here. Laura Larson, City Budget Director. So, the charter governs what is required in terms of how we approach the budget and the requirement for these year-end supplementals. The, in our many years of review, we believe the charter is very clear that all of the agencies must be in balance at the close of the fiscal year. And I've had conversations with the Law Department recently where, you know, they have restated that direction, that we need the year-end supplementals to be compliant with that requirement of our charter. Regarding the timing, I think we had a really healthy discussion in FY, during the FY '26 budget deliberation of seeing things retroactively versus in real time in terms of giving the council more oversight to opine on these items. I think part of the delicate dance that we walk there is, you know, if we increase the budget earlier in the year, we lose any sort of accountability from the agencies to ensure that they are staying within their budget and that they're taking actions to slow spending where needed. We saw that in FY '25, that coming out of the third quarter, when budget controls were put in place for city agencies, we did see a number of city agencies slow their spending, and it did help to reduce the overall deficit that we saw at the end of FY '25. The other thing that I would offer in regards to how we are approaching budget to actual compliance is that, starting with FY '26, we sort of returned to our former approach where there was a high level of scrutiny of all hiring actions and all procurement actions as they were routing through the city's financial system. So, when the city transitioned to Workday in August of 2022, former leadership in the department thought that we could lift some of the budget office's review in some of these critical workflows, especially around procurement. And so, we had removed any sort of budget check, and we had created very, very high thresholds. And quite frankly, we saw what that got us over the last couple of years, where we noticed this overspending too late in the process, and there wasn't a way for us to rein it back in. So, starting on July 1st, my team has been involved in reviewing all purchasing activity at a much lower threshold that we believe that we can catch a lot of things we already have and are already working with agencies to identify where there are misalignments between how they're spending money and how they're budgeting money so that we can get better there. So, I say all that to say, yes, we will still need some form of the year-end supplemental. Do I expect that we would be able to see fewer agencies in deficit? Yes, that is where we're going with these additional controls and reviews that are in place. The other thing that we can commit to and that we continue to work towards in the budget office is to try to look at ways that we can bring those items sooner to the council so that it does, so that there is more of a role. So, if there is a material deviation from the budget that we observe based off of our second or third quarter projections, that we could initiate those supplementals and bring them to you earlier in the fiscal year.
I appreciate that. That helps a lot to understand. And, you know, I think whatever we can do to reduce that amount is, I think, really helpful from a planning and budgeting and certainly an oversight perspective for the council. In light of that, I'm curious, how does that need to approve year-end supplementals impact the timing for completing the Act for by December 31st?
Yeah, so we, I was actually discussing this with Dexter in the council president's office earlier. We're working to initiate the final batch of actions so that they can be introduced before the city council on October 31st. And then, we're coordinating closely with Chairwoman McCray so that we can hold hearings and initiate those actions as quickly as possible as to not creep up on that December 31st deadline.
I appreciate it. And to be clear, when the council's asked to approve year-end supplementals, we're in essence approving the appropriation to cover expenditures that have already been made. Is that correct?
That's correct, because it's for the, in this case, it'll be for the prior fiscal year.
And so, given what you explained, that some of the changes that we're making, do you think that's sufficient to address the agency overspending issue throughout the course of the year? Or do you anticipate that there's really, we haven't yet figured out if there is a way to do that?
So, a lot of the, so some of these additional reviews and controls that I'm talking about, we turned them back on on July 1st. So, what I would say is that I would hope to see fewer agencies that are trending in deficit for FY '26 than what we saw in FY '25. The other item that, you know, that we have discussed, and I believe that we can commit to, is that if there is a material deviation from the budget, so if there's something large that we know that we need, that wasn't planned in the budget, that we will bring those to the, we can bring those to the body throughout the fiscal year rather than cleaning those things up at the end. One example that we should have, that I own, that we should have done in FY '25 is like, we should have brought a supplemental forward for the fire and police union contracts. Once those contracts were ratified and we knew that they were going to cost us more than what we had anticipated in the budget. Coordinating with the administration, we had identified how we would fund those costs. But we were sort of monitoring that to see if we could absorb it within current revenues for the current fiscal year. But I think moving forward, we could bring those types of items as they, as we have that information throughout the fiscal year. That would reduce the volume.
I appreciate it. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Councilman Conway. I appreciate you following up on that line and the ongoing conversation about how we can reduce the amount of supplementals that the council has asked to retroactively support. Council Vice President Middleton?
Thank you, Mr. President. And thank you all for taking your time this evening to answer our questions. I guess first, I want to just give a quick comment. Glad to hear that there's still corrective actions happening with Workday, like consistent training, putting in policies and an actual manual. As more people are retiring, you know, that you're losing that wisdom, and to have those things in place are just so important. But I want to kind of go back to just some more conversation about water billing. But I want to hear from the auditors. And I say that partly because water billing has been a problem for, way before this, the Mayor Scott's administration came. I mean, it's been going on for at least 18 years and just progressing, and has gotten worse to the point. And we talk about it because it's a constituent item, and they get bills every month. Well, before, it was, what, quarterly? Or, and now, we had to adjust to every month. So, we did things, and I was the sponsor of the Water Accountability Act, and which took a lot of work because there were advocates that did that, where we have an administration and a council that supported that act. And then came Water For All. And then, we got the Office of, you know, Customer Appeals and Advocacy, which was definitely needed. And I guess my question to the auditors, when you go through and review and make your decisions of weaknesses and so on, do you look at those things that we, the council, had advocated for or put in place? Do they weigh in? Or, you know, I'm trying to get to, how do you weigh all that in? And how can the council continue to help? Or, these things that we worked on, did it go by the wayside? How do you look at all of that? One, just one thing that I noticed through the process with the Office of Customer Appeals is that that office needs to continue to build a stronger relationship with DPW being a new office within. Because they play a good role, and I have seen great things happen because of that office and, of course, the leadership in it. Can you answer?
Absolutely, and thank you. When we look at the, any, really any function within the city, it's a process to understand the design of the process, to understand the design of the controls. And our focus primarily is related on how does that process feed the amounts that go into the general ledger and ultimately to be within the financial statements. So, from an auditor's perspective, some of the things that I know that the council has really pushed, working on, looking at, you know, kind of operationally, those types of items wouldn't necessarily be in the scope of the audit that we have performed. However, we do consider all of those items when we're looking at the process. And then, what we go through and do, as I mentioned, is we will go and identify risks. We will then go and understand how management has designed. We will observe how management has operated the procedures and controls. And then, we will go do testing to determine whether or not what we saw actually did occur. And as we identify gaps, whether that is in the design of the procedures or in the operation of those procedures, then would determine whether or not we have a control deficiency, a significant deficiency, or a material weakness.
Thank you for that clarification, because I was sitting here just thinking, oh, my God, all that work that we were doing with all those, is somebody gonna bring that up to... Is there a way that the council should be helping more? I mean, because we're here to help. We're all working for our constituency.
So, I think from an external auditor perspective, the fact that we're all sitting here talking about the challenges and what management has put in place from a observation standpoint, I think is a huge step forward to be able, you know, because ultimately, you know, at the end of the day, from an audit perspective, there's nothing better than when we're able to issue a boring audit that doesn't have very much in it. Unfortunately, that has not been the history with the city. So, I would ask that you continue to be what you're doing here, because it is, I believe, will make, will go through and make a difference. I will tee up the city auditor because there are items, performance audits and other items that can be performed that would be outside, like I said, outside the scope of what we are engaged to do that could potentially answer some of those questions.
Thank you.
Right, so when it comes to the annual selection of biannual audits, we meet with different staff and constituents to see what was helpful. And then, there's been special projects and special requests related to these types of things. So, if there's a specific objective and goal that you have in mind, that is something we're open to that's outside of the Act for and single audit process.
Thank you. Thank you. And thank you, Mr. President. You're on the right track.
Thank you, Madam Vice President. Thank you, Josh, and William and team. Councilman Parker?
Thank you, Mr. President. Thank you all for being here with us this evening for the conversation. Just really, I think I tracked, but maybe it's helpful for folks who are watching or will kind of review this later, in thinking about the material weakness kind of correction process. And I think you've laid it out really well, but I want to talk through the chronology of that to make sure I tracked it. And I'd say, let's, for the sake of this hypothetical, let's say this is a new material weakness that's been identified, not one that you all have been working on for a number of years. So, let's say here in the FY '24 audit, a new material weakness was identified. That then kind of like comes to the awareness of city leadership in spring of 2025, when that document isn't, the audit's in front of us. Let's say there's a planning process around what corrections could be made. And then kind of over the course of that 20, by the, so, that's, you know, spring of FY 2025. So, over the course of FY 2026 that we're in right now, those changes are being implemented. Let's say by the end of 2026, the full changes have been implemented, FY 2026 have been implemented. So, then we're not going to see kind of a full year's worth of those changes, improvements, if you can even accomplish it in one fiscal year, until FY 2027 on that audit, which will then show up in spring of 2028. Right? So, it'll be, and this, that's not, this is just me trying to work the other chronology, not saying somehow that's inappropriate at all. I mean, that strikes me as actually a pretty aggressive timeline to move from a new finding of material weakness to when we actually collectively see an audit report that captures the corrections made. So, it'd be from like FY 2024 new material weakness, we might not see until the FY 2027 audit report in spring 28. Is that right?
That's, that's basically right, but I want to elaborate on that a little bit.
Great.
We, we fortunately don't see the kinds of new weaknesses these days that are deep and structural that we used to see years ago. When I look at the new weaknesses that popped up in FY '24, the one that's very top of mind for us, because there was a financial new weakness, was how we handled cash. And that came out of quite simply just a reconciliation mistake that can be fixed through training, that that sort of multi-year view actually doesn't apply to. It's a sort of easy fix, right? And that's not to say that every material weakness is an easy fix. We wish they were. But it's, it's a sort of caveat that we are, and this is good news, seeing fewer new weaknesses. So, the new weaknesses that we are seeing tend to be more technical in nature, and so sometimes are easier fixes, because technical weaknesses, you could just go in and fix as opposed to needing that kind of three-year plan.
So, for example, if we were on a regular timeline, which we're aiming for, for FY '25, and the audit was available, I think in March, right, is when that is, perhaps those technical, there could be a plan implemented so that by the time the new fiscal year starts next July, that might already be in place, and so it would show up a full year earlier.
That's right.
That's great. I really appreciate that. Thank you for sharing the FY 2024 year-end fund balance. I know it's early yet. Do we have some sense of what these numbers might look like for FY 2025?
It is still early. I want to be very, very careful about throwing out any numbers, because it's always kind of the last thing that we figure out once all the other numbers are set. And one thing that we are going to be able to do this year, because we're going to be on time, is have more time and breathing room at the end of the process to be a little bit more kind of thoughtful and thorough about how we do the assignment process. Because I think, as you heard Deputy Sutcliffe sort of refer to, we, we kind of had to do a little bit of like a timing offset, because the ACFIR came out so late in how we treated some of what we would normally, you know, consider it offsetting for capital or something like that. So, we're going to be able to have the time to figure out exactly what it is, but it is very much a process that kind of comes on the back end after all the numbers are set. The one thing we know for sure is that the rainy day fund is secure. We, we sort of build everything in a way that the rainy day fund will be there no matter what.
Of 170?
The 170, yes. So, like, by design, by policy and by accounting, we will always have at least the rainy day fund in our unassigned balance.
And that, and that 170 is the equivalent of the 8%, right?
By policy, we are trying to get it up to the 8%, so we build it every year.
Great. I'd like to come back to that in a second. Director, this may be for Director Harrison, or for you. With this, with this spreadsheet, or with this slide here on the 2024 year-end balance, this was after supplementals or before supplementals? Because I know a bunch of, say, assigned funds were moved, like 53 million in assigned funds were moved as part of the supplemental process. So, I'm just trying to, was this, is this a point in time after supplementals have been handled or before?
This would have captured all of the amendments and supplementals to the fiscal '24 budget.
Okay. So, this is after all those funds were moved, that we voted on back in January and things like that?
Correct.
Okay. I really appreciate that. To the assigned, undesigned, unassigned aspect, right? So, and I know you were talking about that assignment process. It sounds as though what we start with, what you all start with, is, is making sure that the rainy day funds is there at the amount it needs to be in the unassigned.
Well, it's, it's the rainy day fund, but it's also the risks. We, we go through, we, we make sure that the legally mandated pieces are accounted for. Then we go through further and capture the known risks. Then we go through, and as Deputy Sutcliffe talked about, we capture the projected risks. And that is a more complex exercise, because you then have to kind of get into, what do you know about in terms of upcoming lawsuits and things like that? And, and in there is, is a kind of complex exercise, where you sort of balance between the risks that are known to you and how much you, and how much you have left over in unassigned.
I think the other thing that I would just add for the director, if we look back at the fund balance amounts going back to FY '23, the biggest portion of what was getting assigned was addressing some of the risk areas that Bob spoke about. But also, going back to FY '23, we also have made significant capital investments through fund balance. And so, you see those capital appropriations in the subsequent year's budget living in the assignment in the prior year ACFIR. So, like, one great example was in FY '23. That was coming on the heels of fiscal '22, where we had a really, really large surplus in transfer and recordation taxes. And so, we had made a significant capital appropriation that lived as an assigned fund balance to fund that subsequent year budget action.
And, and I do want to mention one other thing. It's, it's a little bit less positive, but it's important for transparency. We enjoy very strong AA rated bonds. And in our most recent round of ratings, our bonds were confirmed as AA. Now, S&amp;P confirmed us as AA with a stable outlook. Moody's unfortunately put us as AA with a negative outlook. And that negative outlook was because they said that they were concerned actually about fund balance. Now, the fund balance they were concerned about was in the utility funds, but the write-up sort of expressed that overall fund balance for the city, in their view, kind of affects everything. And the utility fund balance was enough to affect city fund balance from their perspective. There's actually quite a bit of technical discussion there about whether or not utility funds should affect general funds. It's the city's position that they should not. With that being said, we know that ratings agencies are very, very interested in fund balance and strongly prefer healthy fund balance amounts. So, that's one of the big things that we kind of look for as we, as we wrap up the year and kind of balance our final.
And those, and those utility fund balances aren't reflected. This is, this is our general fund balance.
This is our, just our general fund. But, but our general fund balance, including our very strong rainy day fund, has always been cited by the ratings agencies as a major contributing factor to why we're AA rated.
Right. I think, last question, and this could be for anybody there in the front row, or really, I think all of you. So, if, if the 170 million is there for the rainy day funds, and the unassigned balance on, on this slide was 259, leaves about, leaves about $90 million there. And so, then that's, I hear the assigned funds often get sent to capital and things like that. So, I don't know, tell me, where does that 90 million go? And I'm sorry if that's a really simple question here, but I'm really curious.
And, and that money is funding a portion of the carryforward encumbrances that Bob talked about, but then also keeping in mind that we have $54 million of fund balance appropriations that are part of the FY '26 budget. That includes $40 million going to capital, $8.7 million for a one-time real estate, one-time real estate items in the operating budget, and $5.3 million to offset the projected loss of income tax revenue that we learned about.
Right. I appreciate that. And so, because I, I thought that was probably the case, but then you all had shared before that, that the capital expenditures are often coming out of the assigneds, not the unassigneds. And so, then I was, that was where I was trying to, but you're saying, but we push forward a bunch of that unassigned money into capital this year?
Yes. So, in regards to that $91 million that was extra, it was, a portion of it was set aside for these actions that I mentioned. I think part of, I'm sorry, I sort of misunderstood your question initially. Part of the interaction there was the timing between when the fund balance amount was finalized for FY '24 and when we were doing all the actions for '25. And so, it was sort of an in and out. We needed some of those dollars to appropriate for the prior year supplementals, but it was before they had been formally assigned. So, it was.
And the director mentioned that before, and that that's something that we'll be able to clean up.
Yes.
Very good. I really appreciate it. Thank you all so much.
Yes.
Thank you, Mr. President.
No, thank you, Councilman Parker. Thank you for attempting to de-wonkify. It's a complicated topic, and appreciate you putting it as plainly as one can. Councilman Jones?
Thank you, Mr. President. First, I just want to take a moment to thank all the witnesses for testifying today and for all your hard work in making sure we take the steps to ensure that the corrective actions that need to take place are taking place. Over the last few days, I've been learning a lot about the annual comprehensive financial report and why it's important to the work that we do. So, it's pretty frustrating hearing that in the last few years, it's been coming in late and delaying other things. But I'm glad to hear we're moving in the right direction. But I want to turn our attention to everyone's favorite software program, Workday, which Director Max, and I guess this question could be for you. Correct me if I'm wrong, but now we're able to pull Workday data into the required templates to develop the annual comprehensive report. Is that correct?
That's right. We, we use Workday as kind of the core of how we pull our data in conjunction with other programs.
Okay. So, does that mean that going forward, you anticipate that there will be no more need to adjust other accounts after the fiscal year ends due to challenges with Workday?
With the caveat that we can't ever completely know the future, I can certainly say that we are past the growing pains of training and implementation that we faced in the initial years of Workday adoption. We have implemented both Workday and, and the Workiva platform into the creation of our ACFIR documents. And that is already definitely showing in how, how our reports are pulling for this year, for this cycle. So, part of my answer earlier in why I'm so confident that we're on track this year is because we haven't had any hiccups this year. Everything has gone smoothly this year. So, and with, without a crystal ball, but it, it does look like we are past those growing pains.
And that was more, that question was more geared towards like the account adjustments and things that I heard previously.
Well, I, I do want to elaborate a little bit there. If you're speaking about journal entries, journal entries are something in accounting where you basically go back and say, we put this here, but actually it belonged to somewhere else. It is sometimes necessary, but in accounting, we sometimes think of it as a necessary evil. And in a healthy accounting ecosystem, over time, you decrease your reliance on journal entries. So, one of the longer-term projects in the Department of Finance is to work with all agencies across the city to decrease the reliance on journal entries. This year, our biggest focus is an on-time ACFIR publication. We haven't been able to do one since FY '20, and it is very exciting that we're finally on track for one. If we get there, that means that the back half of the year will be much more free for us, and we'll be able to focus on things like working with agencies on trainings to limit journal entries, so that we can have fewer of those kinds of adjustments, which will make different functions like reporting easier and generally sort of improve our, our different financial functions going forward. But that's, that's getting really deep into the weeds. Kind of at a high level, Workday is working as intended as far as pulling the data that we need for our reporting.
Got you for that. I appreciate the clarification. I guess my next question is, when you mentioned it just now regarding the training, do you anticipate needing any additional ongoing updates to Workday or staff training to enable us, to enable us to produce an annual comprehensive report in a timely manner?
We are always doing trainings and always updating our trainings.
But just, just in a sense of meeting our standard bar of getting it in on time, and like, do you feel like there's additional trainings in order to meet that goal? I understand the, the necessary need of trainings and move forward.
Absolutely. So, as we mentioned, staffing is a critical component. And part of staffing is not only recruiting and retaining skilled and competent staff, but it's also supporting them, right? So, identifying what are the trainings that they need. And I would say, you know, that goes beyond Workday to standard trainings, for example, GFOA.
Fiona, just one sec. To the gentleman who's on the upstairs, could you keep conversation out of the chamber? Appreciate it. Please go ahead. I'm sorry about that.
Sorry, thank you. So, that also relates to ensuring that staff have access to things that frankly, in past years, they haven't, like attending GFOA, getting to share best practices, going to Workday Rising conferences, et cetera. The other thing that we're doing is evaluating, and Acting Chief Tillman has been doing an outstanding job at identifying the current portfolios of staff, breaking down the tasks that they do, and identifying areas where we can create some redundancy. We realize that's been a weakness in the past, where that one person that's critical for a task retires, is sick, needs leave for some other reason, and we're faced with a loss of that function. So, that work is ongoing, and that will result in identifying who needs additional training to be able to do that kind of cross-training work.
But as of kind of right now with the team and the staff you have, do you feel comfortable that the next annual comprehensive financial report will be on time with the training that folks have?
Yes.
Okay. Just, just want to build that confidence that we are there and we aren't. But I understand the need of.
And the work is ongoing, right? I just had, I'm sorry, two positions reclassed to modify the structure so that we have fewer accountants. We had one accountant supervising 13 accountants. That's really challenging.
Okay.
And so, identifying that was a structural need, we were able to go through that budget and HR process to break that out. Changes like that are really critical and important. That work is not complete, but it's actively in process. That work is not complete, but it's actively in process.
Absolutely. And just for context, I want to add that we've been staffing up and getting these trainings in place for some time, and we're finally getting to a good place about it. This is a challenge that is very well-known in the accounting industry and has been building for some time. There've been shortages of CPAs that have been kind of generationally building and were amplified by COVID that have made it hard for jurisdictions across the country to make their publications on time. Almost half of states in the country don't make their ACFs on time. And that's not in any way an excuse. That's just context for the fact that Baltimore City, in being on time, is now going to be ahead of the pack and exactly where we belong, setting an example for the rest of the country. So I just want to say that I'm very proud of my team in finally getting us to this place, and we are now the standard setters.
And when it comes to software updates or additional updates, how about we're pretty settled there?
And so one of the benefits of Workday is that there are those regular quarterly updates that include mandatory updates that anyone who has that Workday product across the nation is required to do. The benefit of that is that we can't get behind, right? So that innovation and those updates that are needed to keep the system running smoothly are required. We do them. Of course, we do it in partnership with our partners in Workday, so BISIT, Baltimore City Information Technology, and then the Department of Human Resources. And there is a structure and framework for those releases coming out for, in fact, our teams are working now on an update that's coming out very soon. And so you'll see additional trainings and updates on how that will look for various parts of the platform.
Okay. Thank you. And just one last question, Mr. President. Finally, just to clarify, do we now have formal written procedures for monthly and yearly, a year-end fiscal reports that reflect the changes made to draw data from Workday? And do these meet the auditor's expectations?
So we've developed detailed timelines and tasks lists. We do not have complete SOPs. I'll point out that, you know, we are still in the staffing of process. And we also are working very actively on a daily, an hourly basis with our team on the deliverables related to the financial reporting. And that's one of the benefits of being on time, so that when we finish December 31st, our team as a whole has a period where they can do the process improvement pieces that frankly, if your audit is late, you are continually working towards the next audit. So for example, when we put down the audit this year, within two days, we had started the planning and process for the new audit.
Is there a plan to create like monthly or yearly SOPs to kind of formalize this process?
Yes.
Okay. All right. You know how long it may be until we get to the point? Because I understand you shouldn't probably create SOPs if we hadn't met the goal, then that would kind of be alarming. But once we meet the goal, then it's probably best to.
Yeah, so we have the timeline for the structure for beginning the work on SOPs in January.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Jones. Appreciate the line around Workday. This has been, as you all know, both an important innovation for our city, but also a real challenge, and have worked closely with the Chair of the Labor Committee on an issue that impacted firefighters and not getting pay bumps. Appreciate DCA Kearney's support as well as C Administrator in getting that rectified, but do appreciate the push around Workday. Last but not least, Councilmember Porter.
Thank you so much, Mr. Chair. I can go the next round. Thank you.
This is our last round?
Oh, this is the last one? Oh, okay. Well, one of the questions that I had, I was listening to the hearing, and Director, I want to really understand the financial and fiscal landscape of the city in comparison to other cities. And so can you speak to how Baltimore fares in relation to other cities as it relates to audits? I know you came from New York. Talk to us about that if you can.
But could you elaborate just a little bit on?
Yeah. So one of the major issues that I'm having as I reviewed the documents for today is, are other cities experiencing the same challenges as we are? How are they getting through them with impending federal cliffs that are happening in other major democratic cities? How can we better prepare ourselves for these next four years? Thank you.
Absolutely.
Thank you, Mr. President.
I actually started, I think, touching on this just in my last response, but other cities and states have faced very similar challenges in recent years. There has been a shortage of certified accountants in the industry that had been kind of building generationally and was amplified during the COVID period. And that has led to a lot of jurisdictions missing deadlines in the last several years. There have been, I would say, a wide range among jurisdictions of results. Baltimore is very, very aggressive in the remediation that we had begun putting into place several years ago. We invested a lot, both in terms of people and in terms of systems, starting about three or four years ago in kind of fixing these problems. It takes several years to start seeing results. And I would say that compared to other cities, the hole we were in was pretty deep back in 2020, 2021, 2022. But the aggression with which we tackled the problem was on the highest end of what I was familiar with. And so where we are today is we are starting to get to that place where we are better than average, better than most, which I would say is very, very positive considering that that is very much not where we were just a few short years ago. I would actually invite my partners in SB who work very actively with many jurisdictions to kind of share their thoughts on this.
So I think in Good Evening, if you look at, as mentioned, post-pandemic, the Great Resignation has affected public accountants significantly. And government accountants are somewhat of a special breed, if you will, that there are not a lot of folks out there that specialize in governmental accounting for that. And as a result of, you know, A, the aging of that population, and then B, as a result of the pandemic, there is a lot of pressure to go and find and develop those personnel. I would direct you to look at any major cities' ACF. You look at the different states' ACFs that, you know, kind of post-pandemic, you know, they're still later than what they have been historically. This year's GF-OA conference, a national GF-OA, they went, the city has historically participated in the Certificate of Achievement in Excellence in Financial Reporting, which has a deadline of December 31st, six months after year-end. This is the first year that GF-OA said they're stopped giving extensions. So it gives you an idea that the number of items that are out there and kind of putting the foot down, if you will, to get back to pre-pandemic times to have statements out timely.
And so the reason why I asked that question, Baltimore has a 22.6% Medicaid population here in the city of Baltimore. When we're looking at service delivery for our agencies, it's going to be directly correlated to the population where which we serve. And so ideally, our financial and fiscal landscape is going to be impacted even from an auditing perspective, looking at different agencies, seeing upwards of their higher levels of service delivery, where they're going. Like, it's going to have an impact. And so as we approach these next four years with the federal uncertainties, I want to make sure that we have a plan of action, but that we're taking into account not only just the reality, but where we know that the fiscal climate is going in the future.
I completely agree. We are very cognizant of the risks that are out there. These types of systems take time to build, and luckily, we have been building them for years. In a perfect world, you would have years more. We do not. We have to be there now, and we are treating it that way. This is the year that we're going to be on time. This is the year that we are going to meet corrective action plans and start seeing these findings removed, because this is the year that we are going to be potentially at risk and we are going to protect ourselves and defend ourselves and the citizens that rely on these grants to the best of our ability. So here we are.
Thank you so much, Mr. President.
And we are at our strongest now.
Thank you, Councilmember Porter. And just to pick up on that point, given the uncertain federal landscape, again, just the importance of getting it right this year, making sure these are delivered on time and precise. I really want to thank Director Moxton, Mr. Pash, the SB team, Laura, Bob, all the folks who have been contributing to this work. It is extremely important to this council that these reports, ACF and the single audit, come in on time so that we are able to deliver for the residents true transparency when it comes to our fiscal situation. There have been significant improvements that you all have been making, and they do not go unnoticed. I am, this council is going to hold you to that commitment around the ACF coming in on time this year. Again, appreciate also the conversation around the material deficiencies, and we want to see those corrected, particularly those that have been recurrent. That, again, should be, should be something that we as a city are able to do. Again, want to thank all my colleagues. Again, this was a little on the wonkier side for the city council and for the administration, this conversation, but it's an important one. And as we continue to improve our fiscal stewardship and our oversight capacity, I just appreciate the way everyone showed up this evening. So again, thank you for being here, Deputy City Administrator, the entire team, colleagues. That will conclude, and the committee of the whole will be in recess.